Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Friday, April 11th, 2014. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. In accordance with mass general laws, I have to announce that this meeting is being recorded by both the Selectmen's Office and by Islaan Meadow Cable Access, and I have to ask if anyone in the audience is recording it also. I see Chris Mazza from the reminder. Thank you, Chris. Our first item on the agenda is reorganization of the Board, and before we do that, I want to, A, welcome Billy Gorman as the newest member of the Board, and wish him well, and it was going to be great working with him. And also, because we left too soon at our last meeting, we had a million things to do, I just wanted to say a word about Deb Baransky, who I thought did a fabulous job in the year she was here. And she was a great addition to the Board, and we're going to miss her, and we wish her all the success in the world in her future endeavors. And I did tell her that because she was leaving our Board when she gets elected, she has to bring a lot of money back to the town.
There you go.
So she has promised to do that. The first item on our agenda is the reorganization of the Board. And every year when we have an election, we usually reorganize the Board. We have different jobs in our Board, and I don't know if we're going to do them all tonight, but I think we're going to do some of the major ones. And just to give a brief history before we do this, historically, the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen usually would come in, the person would be the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen in their third year in office of their three-year term. The last few years, due to some turmoil, which I won't reiterate, we had some issues, so therefore, we sort of got off track, and we had to do things out of order. So that was why I was Chairman in the second year of my second term instead of the third year, and actually, for a little while longer than that. So I just want to get that out there in front. At some point, we should get back to where we're doing it in order, but I just want to say that I've enjoyed being Chairman, and hopefully, did a fairly decent job. If need be, I would like to continue. You scared me from it with the glasses on. But we'll keep that. With that being said, as far as reorganization of the Board, are there any nominations for any of the positions in the Board?
Do you want to start at the top?
Sure.
Okay.
Anyone?
So he needs a nomination for the Chair?
Yeah. Or, yeah. If you want to, the way this works is someone says, presents a name to be Chair, and then it gets seconded, and then...
Does she want to be Chair of the Board?
No, I don't know what, no, we need a name.
You need a name. Somebody needs to nominate, somebody, for Chair.
I nominate her for the Board.
Well, second, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm just going along with the phone.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's see, how about Board of Health?
I would nominate Billy Gorman for Board of Health, please.
Is there a second? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I guess we have Clerk left.
Yep.
Is there a nomination?
I nominate Paul Federici for the Clerk.
Is there a second?
You need a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now, ask for a five-minute recess while we, I guess, reorganize. Is there, well, you have to vote on it.
Okay. I move the motion.
Is there a second? Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Next, we have an appointment for 4:05 with the Planning Board, and the, are either the Planning Board vacancies? Would Council be bringing us up to speed on...
I think the issue, as I understand it...
Can you come up to the microphone?
The issue, as I understand it, is that there was an error in the preparation of the ballots, and as a result, the one-year candidate was not elected because it was not listed on the ballot, and the five-year candidate was listed as the one-year candidate. The one-year candidate was listed as a five-year candidate...
Through the chair, you've got it backwards. The one-year candidate was listed as a five-year candidate, and the five-year candidate was kept off the ballot.
Was not kept on the ballot.
Right. Okay. So the one-year candidate's position was not on the ballot, the...
The one-year position was on the ballot, the five-year candidate was not on the ballot.
But the one-year candidate was listed as a five-year candidate on the ballot, so that was an error.
Let me see if I can start again.
Okay.
Hi, Jim, how are you?
As I understand it, there were two positions on the Planning Board that were vacant.
Yes.
A one-year, the balance of remaining term, which was for one year, and then a second position, which was a full term for five years.
Yes.
One individual, Mr. Richards submitted nomination papers for the one-year position, and Sitting Planning Board Member, Mr. Carabetta, submitted papers for the five-year position.
That is correct.
To some inadvertence, the one-year position was not listed at all on the ballot. The five-year position was listed on the ballot, but the one-year candidate, Mr. Richards, was listed as the person to be elected to that position, and the sitting Board Member who had returned nomination papers for the five-year position, Mr. Carabetta, was not listed on the ballot.
Yes.
As a result, the election took place, no one voted for a one-year term, Mr. Richards received the most votes for a five-year term, and Mr. Carabetta received votes as a write-in candidate because he wasn't on the ballot.
Right.
And subsequent to that, after the election, the next day, Mr. Richards appeared before the Clerk's office and was sworn into the position of a five-year candidate, and then immediately resigned, based on instructions from the state, advised by the Town Clerk. So at this point, there are still two positions on the Planning Board that need to be filled.
Right.
Now, the process to fill a position is, as the Board knows, you're notified by the Board that has the vacancies within 30 days. The two Boards then jointly meet after at least a week's notice to the general public that the meeting is going to take place, and the majority of the two Boards vote then to fill the two vacancies for a period of time until the next election. And I think that's the situation we're at at this point.
Okay. So at this point, we, as a Board, along with the Planning Board, would make the appointment, but we have to give a public notice of seven days.
Correct.
And we have not done that. When you say "public notice," does that, would this act as, could this suffice as a public notice, or do we have to do a posting?
No, I think, two things. One, the two Boards, since they're both here to meet together, could jointly determine a date when they would like to meet to discuss when to, how to act to fill the vacancy. And then, the notices that would be posted on their, on the website and/or on the bulletin board indicating the public meeting is going to take place would be sufficient. But this meeting, by and of itself, with the discussion and the decision by the Boards to meet at some point in the future, more than seven days from today, would be sufficient notice to the general public.
Okay.
If I could add one more point to this, it's not mandatory that the Board, the Boards go through the appointment process. You could vote to hold a special election, to fill both of these positions if you chose to. The downside to that, from the community's point of view, is that an election is going to cost some money, but I'm advised by the Town Clerk approximately $7,000 to hold an election if the Boards were to choose to do that. I don't know that there's any great advantage to the community to hold a special election, but it is one of the areas that you could, you as the Board of Selectmen, could also consider.
I'm going to go to Paul, Paul first, and then I'll...
A couple things if I could through the chair. Seeing as how neither race was contested, first of all, would, I mean, it almost seems like the idea of a special election is a waste of time and money, in my opinion, because you've got two candidates that are, once again, they were running unopposed, so I don't see why the taxpayers should be burdened with an additional $700, $7,500 for an election for something that was, in theory, a given. The second question is, when we meet with the Planning Board to approve or to appoint, if we decide to do that, do we need a full Board? Because one of our members is going to be away for two weeks, and I know not having a full Planning Board, I think, sort of hinders them in the, you know, in the interim. So if we were to decide to appoint someone, I would think we'd want to do it as soon after the seven days as possible, but if we don't have a full Board of Selectmen, and there is a full Planning Board, or, well, I take that back, that's 60 percent of a Planning Board, is that enough to do the appointments?
Well, two of us would make a quorum, right?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
I would also just like to point out, for the purposes of your discussion, that it is my opinion that the, since there was no person elected and sworn in to the one-year Planning Board position, that the current holder of that position will continue to serve until there is either an appointment or an election, and the oath of office for that position is taken. So the Planning Board, even if you take no action for a week or two, will still have a complement, in my opinion, of four members who can act on behalf of the Board.
May I just clarify something? So if the appointment goes through after a week, do both candidates have to, again, run in April on, with the next election? Did I hear you right on that?
The one-year candidate's term would be up, and he would be terming for, if he wanted to run, he'd run for whatever vacancies were available. The candidate in the, Mr. Carabetta would then have to run in April of 2015 for the balance of his four-year term.
That doesn't seem right to me, and I, with respect to Selectman Federici, he did put his paperwork in, and to wait another whole year and have to run again seems, just doesn't seem right. I think I would be in favor of certainly getting, giving some relief to the Board and doing an appointment. However, I would like to, I think, I believe it takes 45 days to have a special election and have those two candidates go ahead and run, and then get it done properly. And then, I'm going to go this way to Mr. Gorman for him...
If I may through the chair, it's 64 days before you can have an election.
64, okay. That's fine. You have something else?
I just think we should appoint him.
But are we able to appoint him for the terms that...
You're able to appoint the one-year candidate for the term he was running for because it's a year, but the five-year candidate could only be appointed until the next election, the annual election, or if you were to call a special election, until that special election.
Even though he got votes, voted him in, in this last election?
Even though what?
Even though he has votes that carried him over? I mean, he did win.
Here's, and I appreciate that, and I understand that concern. I have not been able to get a response, at this point, from General Counsel for the Elections Division of the Secretary of State's Office. But it would have been, my opinion, if the person who received the most votes for the five-year position did not, was not sworn in, that it would have been possible for the town to take the position that, for a number of reasons, he was not the actual candidate entitled to the office because of the votes that Mr. Carabetta received. However, the fact that he was sworn into that office and then resigned from that office creates some real problems for me in giving you an opinion to that effect, because by swearing him in, the registrar of voters in the town, in effect, said, "You were the winner, and we're filling that position." He's resigned to bring the situation where everything can be corrected. So even though, had things fallen in a different way, I might be able to present to you a scenario with respect to Mr. Carabetta's position that would be more in keeping with what you envision. Based on what actually happened on the ground, I have a problem in legally recommending that as a viable position to the Board at this time.
Could you like to hear from the Planning Board, what their feelings are at this point?
You're the boss. I don't know, I mean, I don't think what they, I mean, they can't decide, obviously. I'd love to hear from them, but I don't think they can decide how we can proceed, I mean, unless they're...
I would like to hear from them. Is there anybody, any member of the Planning Board that would like to come up and express? One of you? Any of you? Please.
You want me up?
Yes, please, in the microphone.
We must.
Ralph Page, Planning Board. My opinion would be to, at first, ask the candidate if he would be willing to accept the one-year appointment and then have to run again for an additional four years.
Okay.
The second thing I would ask the Board, I think Mr. Florence has information from the State that he heard late today. I'm not sure what it is, I just heard something in the back, so I'd ask that he be heard from.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Carabetta, please.
I cannot remember, so I really can't speak.
I'm asking you as a former candidate.
It's Plan B or Plan A, is the one-year...
Could you come up to the mic, please?
If Plan, if the first plan is to do a one-year and then a four-year, to save the taxpayers' time, grief and aggravation, then I'm for that.
Okay.
If a mistake had happened, I certainly don't want to hold a special election for an uncontested position, which makes absolutely no sense.
All right.
So I'm agreeable to what this Board finds and what the Planning Board finds.
Okay.
All right?
All right.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Florence?
I just want to, first of all, I apologize about the oversight. Second, I was in discussion with the Secretary of State's Office, and it was, this is what they...
Could you talk up so everybody could hear you?
And maybe pull the mic a little closer.
Okay.
There you go.
I was in discussion with the Secretary of State's Office. In fact, the representative did come to the polling location that day, and under advisement from that office, you know, I, you know, basically did what he recommended, on his advisement. And I was in contact with Town Council in the morning, and I did try to reach him in the afternoon, and I just didn't follow through enough to, you know, to present to him what the Secretary of State's Office said, and, you know, just going on the advice of the Secretary Galvin's Office as a recommendation.
Okay. And so, did you hear any new news? I think the gentleman had said that you heard something new this afternoon.
I don't think I heard anything new. I talked to Town Council about if Mr. Richards was on the ballot incorrectly.
Right.
And if, you know, we did swear him in, I mean, can you reverse that? You know, I just present the question, if he was on the ballot incorrectly, was his swearing in done incorrectly?
Is it going to be reversed?
Yeah.
Council, Town Council, if the name was on the ballot incorrectly, can it be reversed? The swearing in be reversed, is what the Town Clerk is asking.
Well, I'm not going to give that as a legal opinion to the Board as something that you can do.
Okay.
I'm not saying that the name was on the ballot in the five-year position correctly, or that if there had been a challenge to that position, that there would have been any way that that candidate could have retained that five-year position. However, given the circumstances as to what's happened subsequent to the election, it's difficult for me to represent, to give my opinion to the Board that you could ignore the fact that there's been a candidate sworn into that five-year position, and he has not resigned, and saying, "We are now just going to take the person who received the write-in votes and treat them as the five-year candidate." I think that creates some logistical concerns, being able to support the town's position. The mechanisms are there to correct the situation, which would be the appointments or a special election, without getting into an issue where there might be some type of review of the appropriateness of the decisions made with respect to this situation by the Election Commissions or the Secretary of State's Office in respect to that.
Through the chair. Wouldn't that be the same as a write-in vote, if someone wrote in their name? Can't we treat it the same way?
Yes. Here's the situation that I'm wrestling with. If the five-year winner, by the number of votes, had not been sworn in, if we had just been in a situation where you have a candidate who received 1,000 votes, and we have a write-in candidate who received 50 votes or 100 votes, but that write-in candidate had complied with all of the electoral requirements, submitting the nomination papers to get on the ballot, then he really is the only person who is entitled to that position. The person who won the five-year never filed for it. He really had no right to be sworn in and put in that position, but for some reason, that was the direction that we received, and that was what was done. And that's creating problems with me in recommending to the Board that you ignore the fact that there was a candidate who's been sworn into this position. If there was nothing had happened, I would be giving you a different recommendation.
But he, in fact, did file your papers for a five-year, didn't you, when you turned them in?
Did I file my papers yesterday?
Okay.
If I may through the chair?
Yes, please.
Jim, I know you're struggling with this, but is there anything in the State, like in the Secretary of State's Office, or anything that can give us some, I mean, I know they're the ones who told the Town Clerk to do what he did. Is anybody in that office, do you know, have any relief for this situation, that, you know, I mean, I'm not, I don't want the burden to be on you as far, you know what I mean?
No, it's a fair thing. That's why you guys paid me that $450,000 a year to be Counsel.
Obviously, we have communication problems. Decimal points all off.
I had called the Secretary of State's Counsel, General Counsel, when I first found out about this situation on Wednesday, and was told that the General Counsel was on a conference call and would be back to me. I called one other time, but I've not gotten any response from the Secretary of State's Legal Counsel. So I'm here basing it on what I believe to be the situation in Islaan Meadow at the present time. I don't have any independent advice from the Secretary of State's Office. The only thing that, if we were to get an opinion from the Secretary of State's Office that said, "You can disregard the candidacy of the one-year, the mistake, the mistaken five-year candidate because they were never qualified," and a point, then I would be fine with that. I don't have that. I have no reason to believe I'm going to get that. I don't know if I'll get a response to that effect, and I have to advise you now, based on what I know and what I believe the law to be. Now, if they were to give us an opinion that we could rely on, that they weren't going to come in and challenge anything that the Board might do to make Mr. Carabetta the five-year winner, that would be something to base a recommendation on. But I'm not sure that they won't come in and say, "You didn't do it quite the right way because of this, and therefore..." And I don't want to get into advising you to do something that I'm not comfortable is going to be something that can be supported.
Can we hold off on a decision until you do get an answer from them?
I think, in the interest of time, that since we need to give a week's notice, we give the week's notice. If he comes back with an answer that's saying that we don't have to do that, at least we've given the notice, and we can move on, and that way, it'll get things moving. That's my feeling. What do you guys feel?
I agree.
Okay. So...
Could I just ask a question? Can you, can you tell me who the members of the actual Planning Board are now, then? Because we have very important...
I didn't know who they were before the election.
Well, I mean, you said that, you said that Ty could continue...
The members would be, I can answer that question very simply. The members currently, right now, today, are the three sitting members whose terms are still unexpired.
Right.
And the one-year member whose term expired and was up for reelection in the last election, and he will serve until his replacement is appointed or elected and takes his oath of office.
So I have four members of the Planning Board?
Right.
There are four members to the Planning Board currently in my estimation.
Even though Ty was appointed only to the election?
I've given you the answer. We don't have a discussion, we could have to discuss in some other place, but that's the opinion.
Okay. Robin, when is your meeting, please?
Monday, Tuesday, and it's a special permit meeting, so I need four members, otherwise they can vote. And it's a very big hearing, very important hearing.
So she'll have four.
She'll have four.
If I have four...
You do.
Then we can vote.
Okay.
I just see one thing. Again, I'm bad about the oversight, and I just want to, appreciation to Michael Carabetta and Ty, appreciate to Michael Carabetta and Ty Richards for the professionalism in Amcalis to help see this through, resolution through, because it will happen, it's just, you know, with all the scenarios there, you know, see where it goes.
So the next thing is, so the earliest that we could have the appointment would be next Friday? A week from...
Next Friday evening.
Friday evening at 4:00. So anytime, I guess I'm looking at the Planning Board, are you available next Friday at 4:00?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so do we want to set that meeting for next Friday at 4:00 pending? Okay, yes.
Chair, I don't know if this matters, but I believe municipal offices are closed next Friday.
That's right.
Oh, that's right. Is Marcus is closing?
And Monday.
And Monday?
Interesting.
Okay, so that would bring us to the 22nd, Tuesday, the 22nd? Planning Board?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
That would bring us to Tuesday, the 22nd?
Yes, we have Planning Board meeting that we...
What time does your Planning Board...
6:00.
At 6:00, so we met at 4:00. Would you be available, please?
Now, is this meeting supposed to be a joint meeting, then, between the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen, or do I just do a Planning Board and you and a Board of Selectmen?
My understanding through the chairman, the two Boards would post their own, generally speaking, it would be just like this one was done, Board of Selectmen meeting, and the Planning Board is coming with the Board of Selectmen for the appointment process. That would be how it has been handled.
So in this case, it would be the opposite, yeah?
So it would be the 22nd before a call for a meeting?
Right.
So you're going to make that motion?
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to have, have a joint meeting on the 22nd of April for the, for the reason of appointing two positions on the Planning Board.
So moved.
Do I, a second?
Yeah, second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we'll meet on the 22nd at 4:00 PM. If Council should hear anything before then, that...
I'll notify the Chair.
Okay, thank you. So I guess that is...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, guys. Chair?
Yes.
Just a follow-up, I do have a follow-up question.
Yes.
At that point, I'm assuming that the Board's going to try and make some kind of arrangements for either a call-in or a Skype-in, but if that's not the case, could you discuss how... But if that's not the case, could you discuss how the board members will vote or if there's any input maybe from the member who's not present?
If I may?
Yes, you sure can.
I think we discussed that with Jim and he said as long as we have two of our members and the members of the planning board, we have enough to...
Right.
Yeah, because as you pointed out, we have a quorum.
Quorum. But Mr. Gorman, if, we will certainly make every attempt to make sure he's able to Skype in if that's his desire.
As long as he's not on the beach.
Yeah, don't show us anything.
We don't want to see anything inappropriate if you're on the beach.
We don't want to see it. Don't even want to see any sunshine if we don't have any. Okay, our next appointment is at 4:15. We're running just a little bit late. And that's with the Board of Public Works.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sorry.
Just all of us?
Actually, you guys, I think...
Please do.
I think Don said as long as you guys stay there, you can, and project.
Okay.
I'm just going to hand out. And I think Paul, you've seen some of the presentation documentation.
We have four items on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes, you do.
What order you have those in tonight?
It's Chapter 90 and then Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund and then Municipal Space Purchase and then Town Home Innovations.
Thank you.
I guess I'll...
And Selena Federici, if you don't mind walking us through this since you've been a key point person?
Well, actually, I'd be delighted. The first item, which is a Chapter 90, I wasn't involved in, but I guess the question... You guys getting any pothole money that I written a paper?
Yes, we are. We did receive confirmation today that the town is going to be eligible for another $87,263 of pothole money. So what that will mean is that our typical Chapter 90 appropriation vote at town meeting this year will increase from $571,000 and change to $669,015 as a total.
Because we have that four-letter word in town, home street?
Yeah.
That everybody jocks in.
Speed bumps.
Four-letter?
Three.
It's a euphemism.
All right. By the way, welcome.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
So as Mr. Parent indicated to the board, that notice came in today from the state about the additional money. There is a contract document that does need to be signed and returned to the state within seven days. So I would ask the chairman to be available perhaps Monday for the signature.
Okay, welcome, Mr. Parent.
Thank you.
And Mr. of the Board of Public Works, sorry. I didn't mean to leave you out.
So just to sum it up, what I handed out to the board members was a draft of the town meeting article that is typically voted upon every year. And I've updated that draft to include the additional pothole money that was, we were recently notified of. I think that's the extent, unless you have any questions, of our presentation relative to Chapter 90.
Any questions?
Nope.
Mr. Gorman, any questions?
No.
The next item on the agenda, Nick, was...
Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund.
And what I will hand out, I think the former chairman had seen a draft of this document.
Maybe?
And I will provide an updated copy. I can start it off if you'd like, or... The document that I have handed out to the board members is a draft of a policy that could be agreed upon between the Board of Public Works and the Board of Selectmen relative to how the enterprise fund would be implemented going forward. I can speak a little bit to what an enterprise fund is, if that would be helpful.
Sure.
Enterprise fund is allowed by Mass General Law as a means of segregating a portion of the town's business into self-supporting entities, portions of the business that generate revenue and portions of the business that generate expenses, and allows the expenses and the revenue to basically be kept segregated outside of the general fund. I believe the town's been advised for several years now by its auditor that we should move forward in adopting water and sewer enterprise funds. And the plan this year with the agreement of both boards would be to move forward with the language of town meeting that's necessary to adopt those enterprise funds.
Not to interrupt you, but that money would be spent just for that purpose?
Absolutely.
In that revolving fund?
Correct. The money would be appropriated at town meeting, just as it is now, but it would be appropriated for the sole purpose for the water enterprise fund. The water revenue would be kept within the water enterprise fund and solely appropriated for that purpose. And the same thing in the sewer enterprise fund.
Could I ask you a question? What if you had money left over from that at the end of the year? What would you do with that money?
One of the advantages of the water and sewer enterprise funds is that you're allowed to carry a balance forward that's retained within the water business or the sewer business, as opposed to being brought back into the general fund. So that the water and sewer rates would be solely for the purpose of supporting the water and sewer business for the town.
Continue, please.
So as I said, this is something that's been recommended by the town's auditor for several years. The town appropriations committee strongly recommended that the town move forward with it this year. As I indicated, I believe the Board of Selectmen has a draft article in place right now for the enabling statute to allow the water and sewer enterprise funds to be created. The document that was put in front of you today, as I said, has been reviewed by the previous chair as well as the current chair of the Board of Public Works, really focuses on how do costs get apportioned to the water and sewer funds? And basically, what the draft policy says is that the water and sewer enterprise funds are intended to support the water and sewer businesses and the water and sewer businesses only. Some communities have used enterprise funds as a means of funding other things within the town and it's possible to do that. And I'll let Mr. Burek speak in a moment, but that really wasn't the intent, I believe, the Board of Public Works had in mind in terms of the adoption of a water and sewer enterprise fund. And with that, maybe Dan?
Will that help the rates go down?
No, no, the rates, what we've done is, based on what the auditor has recommended, is that in order to carry the money forward year after year, what we've been doing, it's always been that way, we've retained any surplus we've had into the water account, into the sewer account. And in order to comply with federal IRS laws, we have to, at the recommendation of the auditor, now formally set up an enterprise fund for each of those. And what we looked at was it started with the appropriations committee asking for $100,000 from the water and sewer account to offset the expense of the town shortfall in taxes. And in order to do this, it made sense if we were going to adopt it, which we should under the recommendation of the auditor plus the requirements of IRS. We decided that now is the time to implement it as of FY15, if it passes the town meeting, which we're sure it will pass because of the recommendations. And what we're going to be doing in this, our proposal, is we've looked at the staff that we have in each, out of the DPW. And we've always assigned staff. These are water department people. These are highway department. These are parks department. We've taken the people that are in the water department strictly and put them over to the, into the water fund. The same thing with the sewer. The same thing with upstairs in the billing department. We have one person that does the billing for water and sewer. And then some of the other people help with work orders and that sort of thing. We thought we would take that one, take one person of the, in charge of it part-time and make that position move across over into the enterprise fund. So there'll be a person there. Also, we're taking 25% of the superintendent's salary and moving it over into the water and sewer enterprise fund, broken out. We're taking the operations managers, 25%. And this was always done before.
Oh, okay.
And we're not, nothing's doing different. We've always allocated, but we're bringing it forward. We're taking the, when we have these employees in place now, we're taking all the costs attributed to these employees being, we're going to take the retirement and that will come out of the water and sewer fund. Their health insurance, their benefits will come out of the water and sewer fund, which before was coming out of the, just the general fund. We've got the retirement. We've got the health insurance, life, Medicare, workman's comp. All the fees that go along with an employee will be assumed by the water and sewer enterprise fund. Also...
Could I interrupt you, Danny?
Yeah, sure.
Is that just the people that are working in that department?
Yes.
You're talking about?
Right. They're being assigned to this. There's going to be three full-time water department people, three full-time sewer employee people that will be assigned, brought into there. Sort of a trade-off because there's other employees that from time to time will help out.
Float.
Will float over into that thing, into that side. What we feel comfortable with is saying that when it snows out, the water department people are out plowing. The sewer department are out plowing.
That was my next question.
So those, instead of charging that back and forth, we will take the time, basically, we're estimating it's about to be the same for the snow and ice time they spend on it by, when we have a water main break and we take somebody from the highway department and move them over to assist. So it's going to be sort of a wash that way.
Yeah, because when I worked there, you know, one day you're doing this and next day you're doing something else. And that's why I was wondering exactly how you were going to...
Right, so it's basically...
Be consistent with like three people, you know?
Right. So it'll be the people that float over. Now, if we do a capital project, all the fees that can go into that will be looked at as far as the cost of that project. But, you know, normally through the normal operation, it'll be those employees and any separate moving from highway over will be offset by the snow and ice. You know, it comes to snow and ice, anything that is overtime gets charged to snow and ice. Everything that's in regular standard time gets charged to those departments. So also, going forward, as we do now, all the projects, whatever we do, any capital projects, the principal and interest will be paid for out of the separate funds. If it's a water project, when we bond for it, it'll be taken out of the water and same thing for the sewer. We've also looked at our entire fleet of vehicles and assigned the vehicles that are going to be assigned to each, the water department and the ones that will be assigned to the sewer department, including any trailers or any other miscellaneous equipments that are purchased under the capital planning because of the price of the piece of equipment.
So the maintenance and stuff will be taken out of that account?
That also will be tracked. We have a new software program where every, everything is done on a work order system now. So any cost that we do on those equipment will be charged to those accounts.
Right now, it isn't, right?
Correct.
Okay.
It just comes out of the...
Can I ask him your questions until he just gets to it? And then we'll come back to it?
Also, you know, any purchases, once those vehicles are identified as being a water vehicle or a sewer vehicle, when it comes time to replace them, they will be replaced out of the water and sewer fund respectively. So... And that's pretty much, pretty much it. And, you know, everything will be, will stand alone as a separate department and will be tracked, just like it is now, really. The only difference is we're really looking at the number of employees that are going over and this will be paying all their expenses, their retirement included and all their benefits.
Okay. I'm going to go to Billy first because you've had more exposure to, Billy, your questions?
Yeah. How are you going to pick people to go over there?
They're already assigned.
You're going to go through the union and...
It's already assigned. These people are already assigned.
They're already assigned there.
So it's already assigned, you know, you have the water foreman will go over. Sorry, all these positions are already...
It's not a change, then?
No, we're not changing employees. Same employees that are doing the water, the ones that are assigned to water are going to be moving over to the water. Nothing is going to change up there. It's only going to be changing when it comes for accounting purposes.
Yeah.
Everything else goes on, just like it has every day. Nothing, nothing will change.
So training and all that goes toward that fund too, right?
Any expenses?
Any training to do with that particular department?
It's just maybe like running a separate business. Any expenses that are incurred for the water, for the water will be charged to that. Anything for the sewer will be charged to the sewer.
But don't, now you, my understanding is, don't know, you just float money back and forth from...
There's no floating.
No floating at all?
No. We're asking for that going forward, that we have the ability to, because of what's happened with our budget and when you get a 1% increase from the town and you've given a 2% raise, that other money has to come out of the rest of the budget because you've got line item budgets. And we're not allowed to mix funds. So we're trying to ask for some flexibility in that where we can combine some of the funds so we can take it out of there. It's causing us problems as far as accounting purposes. But everything is assigned to that line item that's approved at town meeting.
Okay. Selena Federici?
Thank you. I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to thank everyone for your hard work because I've been in this since the beginning. And I know when we first started talking, we had that vague figure that we couldn't really identify that the appropriations wanted just to sort of balance the budget. And I think it was great that you guys were proactive and went through this and just did it right so we don't have to go reinvent the wheel at a later date. You know, we're not just making them happy, but you guys, you know, went through the, went through the exercise of, you know, identifying everything and getting the costs together. And I think it's, you know, it's going to be a benefit to the town and it's going to help you guys out. And I just, I thank you for your work, your hard work.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask that the selectmen are the one that would present this article because it's being asked for by the auditors. And I'm asking that the auditor will be there to ask any questions that the townspeople might have because again, it's, they're the ones that have been having on their audit for the last several years. And then we will support, from the floor, we will support the passage of this article. And we'll be there for questions still. But again, it's...
Well, how do you feel about us doing it jointly?
Well, yeah, but I'm just saying that when the article comes up, that you present it.
Okay.
And then the auditor would, I think, would present it next. And then we would, just so he can explain more about why you need an enterprise fund and why it's being recommended. So the townspeople will understand that and that we have, the DPW has taken a vote to support this article.
Okay. I do have a question. Do you anticipate that there's going to be an increased cost to the consumer, to our voters? With this, with this shift?
Yes, there's going to be. We don't know what it is yet.
Can you ballpark it, what it's going to be?
We, every April, we do our budget hearings.
Right.
And it's based on projections. Now, one of the other problems that we're going to be looking at that's going to cause rates to increase is there's a 25% increase from Springfield's water rates to us. So we have to take that into consideration when we're setting our rates. But every year, we have a rate-setting hearing where we talk about what it is.
Okay, when is that usually held? I'm sorry. The rate-setting, just for our listening?
Usually, end of April, beginning of May.
End of April, beginning of May, okay.
So, and we will, you know, we look at our budget. We look at where we stand and over the last few years, the combined rate has not changed, but we've changed, we've reduced the water rate and increased the sewer rate because our surplus was getting too big in this account and too low in this account. So just to balance it out, so we would still maintain. But we've maintained the same rate for five or six years now. So, but we will be looking at a cost because now the enterprise fund will be looking at taking on the cost of retirement, which has never been assigned. It's always just been paid for out of a line item budget at town meeting. So we're going to be taking that, which is going to be added to the expense, so...
Okay, so by doing that, is that going to give you a surplus in your other account?
We look at our long-term, we look at our five-year plan as far as where we stand for water projects.
Right.
It's not, it's a complicated thing. I mean... we stand for water projects. It's a, it's not, it's a complicated thing. I mean, not that complicated. We look at our, our five-year plan as far as what we've got for budget, for projects coming up. And the reason we, we do the surplus, it's not just to develop this massive amount of money sitting there, but we look at long-term projects like the, the water tank, the two million gallon water tank, that was gonna cost us several millions of dollars. And by slowly, over time, charging a surplus, we were able to when we, when it was passed at town meeting, to apply that to reduce the bonding. So it was like putting a bigger down payment because we had it there. And that's what we look at doing, where we're gonna be down the road. So we have a, a safety gap in there. We don't see carrying large balances like that because we're not looking at a water tank anymore. But when we, we're looking at that as a major expense, we look to over a number of years, just adding a little surplus just to help with the rate. So you wouldn't, it wouldn't kick on at once and have to make a massive increase in rate.
Well, we want you to bring it down, not up.
Yeah. Tell that to Springfield and they're looking at increasing our rates by 25%, so.
Okay.
Yeah. But we've been, we've been very good. I mean, our, our water and sewer system have, over the years, we've been doing a lot of maintenance and upkeep. And the number of water main breaks we've been having has been reduced significantly over time because of the, the upgrades that we've been doing. The, on the sewer side, INI is, is a big thing where water coming into the sewer pipes, not through household use, but through joints, leaky joints, manholes, that sort of thing. We are spending money to run cameras down there identifying where they are and stopping those because we're paying to send groundwater to Bondi's Island and paying for it. So this is one of the things that can get very expensive, but we've been doing ongoing projects like that to reduce those costs. There's a definite payback in it.
Okay. Um, I think I've got both questions from both sides.
Does the public have any, any questions?
Um, we can, it's, it's not a hearing. So certainly if any, if the public, listening public has any questions, they can speak with the DPW. You meet?
We meet every two weeks.
Every two weeks. Or certainly any one of your board of selectmen, you can reach us and we'll forward it on. Mr. Parent's there. And so you can give him a call at DPW.
Yeah, through the chair. Can I just ask you one more question? When do those rates, when do they let you know about the rates from Springfield?
I can answer. We've received a projection of what their bills are going to be already in March. March, they predicted the next five years, looking out what their estimated rates are. And as Mr. Burak indicated, they're going up significantly, reinforcing the impact on you. More than half of your bill effectively gets paid to Springfield. So if they go up 10%, in order to maintain the status quo, your bill has to go up 5% because it's, it's a major piece of what we pay.
Yeah.
All right. Well, the next thing, if that, anything else, Mr. Burak?
No.
Appreciate the comment.
But they need to vote. We're voting to approve it. They need to vote.
Well, we just got.
Not today. I'm just saying, no, I'm not saying today.
Okay. I was gonna say, please don't ask me a phone or something. I receive a day.
Yeah, we'd ask that you take a vote to recommend it.
Mm-hmm.
Before the town meeting.
Before the town meeting. So.
We vote, we vote.
We voted to accept it. So looking for the selectmen to.
I'm sure my former chair will, will guide me through that process.
And if, if I can add, the document that you see today has been in front of town council, has been in front of the town auditor as well. So they're both blessed at this point, but obviously you need to read it yourself.
Absolutely, absolutely. The next thing that we have up is the municipal study. Thank you, Mr. Burak.
Yes.
Did you notice we didn't shake anybody's hand to go?
Bruce, do you wanna join me in this one?
Yep.
Okay, I guess I have to stand here. Come on. Mr. Burak will get you after.
I don't know if I was handing documents out, if I handed out this one as well. I, yeah, I do believe, looks like you have a copy of that. My understanding is that the, the board previously received a draft copy of this memorandum several weeks ago. Obviously, Mr. Gorman hasn't seen the document, but didn't have the chance. So we'll spend a couple of minutes, if you don't mind, walking through the key points of the document.
No, no, that's okay. It's, I, I don't, I don't mind us switching back for this meeting if.
This is my highlighted copy.
Okay, that's fine. You can.
I highlight that.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you.
So the background of this, we were asked by the town administrator as representative of the town's building management division to go forward and take a look at one of the proposals that have been presented to the town in terms of one of the potential new spaces that the town might acquire. And myself and Mr. Fenny went through, Mr. Fenny's been in the building a couple of times. I was in the building one time. And based on those inspections and based on discussions with a number of folks, including the realtor representing the, the property owner, we came up with a number of observations, a number of comments regarding that property.
Okay.
Stepping through the memorandum, basically, that's what the memorandum summarizes and I'll, I'll try to hit each one of the key points in, in brief. Overall, you know, we looked at the building. The building is in good shape. It's been well-maintained over the years. So it's structurally sound, et cetera. So we have no qualms about the integrity of the building or the integrity of the property. One of the more significant issues that we, we, we came across was the available parking at that space, at that location. There are currently 27 non-handicap parking spaces available on site. The building capacity, we estimate to be in the range of about 40 employees if the building was fully utilized for employee purposes. We also did double-check that against what that building would require. If it was constructed today as a new office building and under current zoning codes, it would require 48 parking spaces, just to put everything in context. In talking with the realtor representing the property owner, it was interesting that he noted that there is competition for parking between the buildings that exist at that site. So that the rear building, for instance, is actually allowed by an agreement between the current property owners to utilize some of the front parking space, the parking space that would become the town's if the town acquired the building. So that adds perhaps to the shortage of parking.
Nothing, could you say that again?
The rear building, which is owned separately, has an agreement with the property owner for the front building, which is the building that the, the town has been off, has been offered to the town, to allow the rear building tenants and, and visitors to use the front space. That's a short-term agreement. It isn't anything that would necessarily carry over should the town acquire the property. But it gives you an indication that there's a existing shortage of parking that might create competition for parking if you were to acquire that building.
Okay.
So that we see really is one of the, you know, the more significant items of concern relative to acquiring that building, just having enough parking spaces to serve both the employees in building and any visitors and residents that would be coming into the building. Handicap access, I don't know, Bruce, if you wanna touch on this item, there are a couple of items we found.
Yeah, the handicap access to that facility, it does have a handicap accessible ramp to the facility. In the proposal that was submitted to the town, I believe that the building owner was gonna supply a new elevator and a, I believe, a handicap bathroom for that facility. But the plan did not include a handicap accessible push-button system to the facility. And I believe that the elevator that they were, the, the owner was proposing also was not a, I guess advantageous for the town. I believe it does meet some ADA specifications, but the size of the elevator is roughly 36 inches by 60 inches deep. So I believe it's quite small. In case of emergency, a stretcher from an ambulance wouldn't even fit in the elevator.
Right.
And, and based on some of the, the specs I read, Garavent is the manufacturer of that elevator. It just, it, it's, it's really not a, a, a great unit. I spoke with my elevator company that services all our elevators in town and says the life expectancy of the, the unit specified is roughly about 10 years. So.
And how old is it now?
There is no elevator now. The, the proposer is, was going to install an elevator if the town chose to purchase the building.
One of the requirements of the town's RFP was to provide a fully ADA compliant building. And that was the, the proposer's way to address that requirement. We did again speak with the realtor representing the, the seller and that issue. And he acknowledged that in order to get it accepted as being ADA compliant, you would require a variance from the state architectural barriers board. That is commonly given, but would still be required.
Okay.
The next item we have in here, we thought it would be prudent for the town to understand some of the costs related to this acquisition in addition to a purchase price. And we put some thought for, really for planning purposes. If you asked us to put in a hard budget today, we'd probably spend a little bit more time looking through this. But really, planning level cost estimates in terms of what we consider to be the initial cost that you would have to invest essentially the day that you purchased the building in to, in order to make improvements that are necessary to, to move into the building. Secondly, although the building is in good shape, there are some systems that are nearing the end of their useful life that would have to be upgraded in the near term. And then lastly, try to put our arms around what the operating cost of that building would be. One item we didn't put in here, and in hindsight maybe we should've, is also take a look at the, the potential impact to revenue to the town that would be, the revenue that would be lost if that property was taken off the tax rolls. So there's really at least.
If I'm through the chair.
Yes, absolutely.
I believe, Mr. Mayberry, I think in our meeting, it's estimated to be about $16,000.
That's close, 14 to 16.
14 to 16, okay. Yeah, 'cause I noticed you didn't have that there and you were being gentle with your figures.
Sure. So Bruce, if you wouldn't mind touching on some of the costs that were developed.
Would you say 10,000?
No, 14 to 16,000 dollars of real estate taxes we lose by acquiring the building. Said the person who was all gung ho about this about it.
That's all right. We're looking into it.
So as Mr. Parent was explaining, some of the capital investments for that property, when we do purchase the building, that need to be looked at down the road. The current system is not a fully addressable fire alarm system. That would need to be upgraded. The HVAC system, there are, I believe, six five-ton units at that facility. The existing condition of those condensing units on the rear of the building are in pretty poor shape. So those are some of the, the items that would need to be addressed as far as ADA. Now, the hardware in the facility is ADA compliant. They're just simple doorknobs. They don't have the, the lever mechanisms. You gotta think about also rekeying the whole building, which is a, a pretty costly charge. Fire sprinkler system, there's no currently a fire sprinkler system in that facility. So that would have to be addressed at some point in time.
The, the total cost of the, the near future, near-term type improvements would be, we've estimated $190,000. The move-in costs, if I do the math in my head quickly, total to about $90,000. Essentially, investments you'd need to make, for instance, if you've seen the building, the, the upper floor, which as I understand might be the floor that you might occupy first, currently has no carpeting. So you'd have to put flooring in, for example. You'd have to paint the space. You'd have to deal with making all the necessary electronic and IT-related improvements to make that into a functional building.
All right. Carpeting? We have to have carpeting?
Uh, it's a rough subfloor right now.
Okay, oh, okay. All right, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. Okay.
And then we took a look at the annual operating costs and those total, I believe, just shy of about $45,000. Again, they were, we did these by estimating unit price cost estimates, things like that. So I think it's the right order of magnitude. With a little bit more time, we might refine some of those costs. But there, you know, there's a cost to heating the building. There's a cost to operating the building. And thought that that should be, should be understood.
Okay. Did we speak with them at all to find, share, see if they were gonna share any of this information as opposed to just estimating it?
We did. And some of our estimates were based on actual billing from that building. It's a little bit tricky because significant pieces of the building are not occupied right now.
Okay.
So we did things, for instance, take a look at the space that was occupied, which is separately metered, and tried to extrapolate that to come up with an overall building cost. But it was our, you know, our best estimates at this point. We, we raised a couple of other points. Probably less significant, but worth noting anyway, is that building egress, there's currently two means of egress in the building. There's the front door and there's one side door that comes off the lower level. Minally, that, that, that issue should be brought to the attention of code enforcement officials to see if it meets current code. I don't, I don't believe you could build a building today, but it may be grand throughout the, under existing. But something should be considered. Space planning, you know, our recommendation would be that if you consider acquiring a property like this, before you do so, you put some thought into how do you use that property? And is it more property or is it not enough property than you're looking to acquire? And then lastly, you know, are, is the, is the value that, is the price that's been offered for the, for the property an appropriate value? And I can't say it is or it isn't, but some amount of due diligence there probably is, is, is worth doing.
Okay.
I'm gonna bring up one thing. On the ground floor, the seller was proposing, 'cause we told him it had to have a, a handicap bathroom, he was proposing taking the janitor's closet on the first floor and converting that into a unisex handicap bathroom. And it still would not be a full ADA compliant. So it would need, it'd be a, what's the word, a non-conforming, pre-existing non-conforming handicap bathroom, which means that it's smaller than is allowed for, for full handicap access. And it'll be a unisex besides.
Okay. How big is the janitor's closet? I'm just wondering.
Well, the janitor's closet usually is big enough just to have a.
I'm just saying.
A sink, a slop sink.
A slop sink in there and some supplies.
Good enough.
And that's why it's not gonna be able to accommodate somebody in a wheelchair.
Right.
Because.
Some closets are bigger than others. So I just wanted to make sure.
So it won't, it won't meet full ADA compliance.
Okay. So, Confederity, you went through that building?
I went through it initially with Bruce and Ryan Quimby, I think, and, and the realtor.
Yep.
And, you know, it seems like it, it started with such great hope and promise.
Great hope, yeah.
But it seems like there's more questions than answers now. And, you know, my opinion, I know we have, and I'm just throwing this out there, it's my opinion, but I know we have a warrant item out there, but I really don't think that we could act, you know, we could go to the town in a month or however long it is and, and request money without getting all these questions answered. And I don't know if we have the time, timeframe to do it, you know? And in that vein, the next item, as we follow through on the list, might, you know, there's, there's potential with that also. So, which is an alternative. So that's all I'll say about the building right now.
Okay. Well, we started down this aisle. We might as well finish it up. And this'll give, we wouldn't be making a decision tonight. This'll give you an opportunity to look at it and.
I'd like to say something though.
Absolutely.
I used to work for Mr. LaPlante. I was on the backhoe. They got water problems in that boom, I wasn't wearing a dress there.
Okay.
Because I'm the one who dug the trenches. And that back stairwell fills up with water and comes in. They get a drain down in the bottom. And then also I dug all the way around the building, but they definitely get a water problem there that flooded several times. But I, I didn't see nothing in here about it, you know?
How long ago was that?
Uh, I wanna say five years ago, six years ago.
Five years ago. So it's possible they could've corrected it? Maybe that's why you didn't see it?
They may have.
You know, it wasn't on your radar and there's probably, I bet you go over there now.
I didn't see any. I've looked for that stuff. I didn't see any water damage, but like you said, maybe at some point in time, maybe they corrected it.
Right.
But also on the elevator, now they gotta have the main unit on the bottom to push the elevator up and down.
Yes, yes.
That's gonna take space in that bottom floor also.
Yes.
So that's gonna, and that, that's not in the janitor's closet.
No, it's gonna take up actually office space throughout the whole front side of the building. We just have the nine by 10 roughly, in the blueprints that was submitted.
I was gonna say, if I made through the chair, Bill, when we went through it, they do have, if I remember correctly, a space that in theory could be designated for an elevator. So they, they have planned for that, but they never did anything with it. So there is a space where they would have to take office space away. But they had a designated area that, that they could put an elevator in. So hopefully, yeah, hopefully they included the space for that, the, the unit that you're talking about.
Also that parking, it brew. I mean, if people from the town are gonna be going there to get out onto the road, you can sit there for 15 minutes. Because I give, I, you know, when I go get blood work in the back there.
Yep.
Which was today. I sat there and sat there and sat there. I mean, for the senior, senior citizens that are gonna go to that building, they're gonna have a tough time getting out. I mean, I, I can't see anything good about the building myself.
Okay. All right. Any other comments? See?
Just one more comment, I guess. We appreciate being asked to offer some opinions on this and if a similar type of activity comes up in the future, we're willing to help.
Nick?
Madam Chair, just, this is related to the warrant, which is a little bit further on the agenda. I would ask the board two things here, if you would consider making some kind of a decision as to whether or not you would award the RFP for this building or not. And I've, obviously, I've heard the discussions so, so far. But also, if, if the decision is to not. But also, if the decision is to not do anything, then that, then that warrant article, I think I heard in the discussion, maybe that warrant article doesn't even get published.
Okay.
So I would ask the board to consider, you know, making, see if you, if there's a consensus amongst the board to make a decision on this particular project, so that the RFP process can end or continue.
Okay. Next.
If you want to step off, John, I will make a very brief introduction, then I'll turn things over to Mr. Mayberry and Bruce Fanny to follow up on.
I would gladly. Oh, yes, Paul, how are you?
Good.
See, now they're ignoring you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, no, no, I'm so sorry, and I don't think I got you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
The, getting involved in taking a look at this building that the town is considering purchasing, and taking a look, and we have been involved for several years of taking a look at the town hall space issues, really caused us to put a little bit of thought into, you know, how can we help to solve the problem? Because clearly, there's a problem here, clearly, some departments within town, particularly the IT department and the accounting department, need more space. And how can we accommodate that, how can we accommodate code-related issues and other types of things? And is there a possibility of doing that within the space that's here? So with that, I'll turn it over to the other gentleman.
Okay, and I guess I would say as well, to follow up on Paul's comments and everybody's comments, we've been working on things for a while, and I certainly did enjoy Paul's enthusiasm to let's finally do something.
Do something, right.
So if the worst thing that happens from all of the enthusiasm over the past few years, and especially Paul's last year really pushing and making something happen, I think this might be a viable alternative to consider. And Bruce and staff have spent some time actually kind of studying and analyzing, is there something else we can do? I'm certainly not going to take any of Bruce's presentation away in terms of the detail, because he's got a really nice one for you, and we can go through it quickly, and then you can certainly ask more questions. But I think I want to speak as a long-term board member, that I'm quite proud of our building department. And we were tasked some years ago to see what we could do to reutilize or revitalize, or even recapture some of the buildings that we own, so that we wouldn't have to always be looking to tear down and buy new and abandon and go somewhere else. And I think this is directly in keeping what we're presenting today, something that can be done with the town hall that would give it some more life, an extended period of life, with the good usable space that's needed. And we don't have to then figure out what to do with abandoned space, and now we have this other space, and and the senior center is certainly, COA is certainly a place where we can see what the DPW building department team and staff were able to accomplish. I mean, if we go back some years, we can remember that we were thinking about where are we going to go, and are we going to go to Heritage? Are we going to go here, and we've got to find a place. And when push came to shove, we all got together and said, you know what, we can probably make this town building that already exists a very viable usable place. I know you've all been there, and I hear nothing but kudos, from the billiards room to the refreshment area, to the bathrooms, to the meeting space, you know, to the Zumba areas. I mean, it's been created to be just an all-encompassing, very well utilized facility, and that was done with appropriate funds over years to get us to that place. So I would want Bruce to maybe take us through a few of the, the project itself, the background. What we do have for you is a menu.
Okay.
And the menu can be, you know, discussed a little further, but we think we have a very good approach, so.
So I'm going to give you a brief synopsis of what you have on your sheet there today. Roughly a background, numerous studies have been done since 2000, at least four have been done. And no, nobody's actually taken action on these projects, and I don't know if it's because of committees have changed, boards have changed, and I think just maybe a little lack of communication between departments. And a lot of those renovations included adding square footage, which obviously there was many issues with as far as this building because of parking and everything else. So the plan that, that we put together, I believe would obviously help and benefit the existing departments. You're going to lose some, a little bit of space in here, meeting rooms are going to be impacted. So just keep in mind, we're trying to do what we can with what we have. And obviously, some of the impacts that I haven't addressed as far as capital improvements is because some of the studies that have been proposed, so I've been keeping those off that menu. ADA bathrooms in this facility, they're all original, there's hardly any ventilation, none of them meet ADA requirements. The electrical system, our existing electrical system, just like some of the schools, you can't even buy breakers for them anymore. We don't have any fire sprinkler systems at this facility, especially with all the IT equipment, server equipment, and all that large investment that the town has put into this building. Some other things are, like you said, a lot of elderly people come into this building. We have to send staff downstairs to meet them, so we're proposing an elevator for the facility. And that would really be the only square footage we would be adding to the building. So we'd obviously have to get planning on board. I believe the elevator shaft is roughly 100 square feet, but obviously with everybody's support, I believe we can make it happen.
And there's no occupants per se of that space, so we're not adding another office with another person?
Right, so no more parking spaces.
Exactly.
That's the hope.
There also have been some rumors, and I think Paul's heard, that maybe IT will be going to a school, or I don't know, it's just one of those-
Heard the same rumor.
Yeah, so, and I don't know if that's, obviously, would help with the, with the renovation also. But anyways, the first project, option one, we are proposing, is roughly $460,000. This would allow us to have an elevator to obviously get up to the top floor, new fire sprinkler system, electrical switchgear system, renovate two of the 1967 portion of the building, and that would be this corridor here. We wouldn't be touching the old part of the building, just, just for cost purposes. Create a new IT, accounting, and future human resource office, and that would be in this space here. And that's what I was talking about as far as our conference room space. A lot of your meetings, I see, are done at the senior center now, and I know it's, it's convenient for the board to meet here. We also have the fire station that boards can meet, and we also have the library that people can meet. So it's one of those options. I do have a floor plan at some point in time if the board wants to look at that. And keep in mind with the floor plan that I do have, it is in your packet, that the walls can be moved a foot back, a foot, you know, we can rearrange the existing footprint around, so keep that in mind, it's not set in stone on what we have. So like you said, the first option would be roughly $460,000 to do this portion of the town hall. We wouldn't be touching the clerk's area or the second floor up in the DPW office, except adding a hallway up towards the planning department to access the elevator from the second floor.
To put it in perspective, more than two-thirds of that $460,000 is on code-related upgrades and the elevator. The, you know, the repartitioning, the repurposing of space is actually the very smallest piece of that $460,000.
Option two, that would be a whole renovation to the first floor, actually moving departments around, better suit the public as they move into the, into the building. You would end up actually moving the clerk's office over to the assessor's office to obviously greet the people as soon as they walk into the building, because I believe they get the most traffic. Increasing the inspection services department over near the clerk's existing office, and actually moving the assessors over towards that end of the building, and reconfiguring some other offices. And some of those numbers, or basically all of those numbers, except the items that we would bid out, the fire sprinkler system, the elevator, and also the electrical upgrades. All the improvements would be, would be done by DPW staff and phased accordingly, so less impact to the town departments as those renovations move forward, just like they did at the senior center. We renovate this office, move an office into here, and subsequently move down the line and renovate, so there will be hopefully little impact. There would be probably some, but obviously phase it accordingly. And like you said, the senior center took us a little time, about four years to complete, but obviously they continued the program, programming as they, as we renovated the building.
We took a look at our numbers to complete the council of aging work, and we originally went in estimating that we could do the work at about 40% of the cost of outside contracting, and based on the real numbers for council and aging, that's right about where we were, so. I think we're proving the ability to save quite a bit of money using town forces.
Absolutely.
Couple of quick comments, just to kind of catch up as we go along, is the elevator to service the second floor, it would allow the planning board to actually hold many of their meetings, not necessarily their hearings, but many of their meetings don't have a huge turnout, so instead of having to come down here, because it would be accessible to all public-
We hope to change that.
You hope to change.
People come to the meeting.
But in any case, I mean, they would be able to have meetings, you know, at locations, you know, upstairs, adjacent to where their paperwork is, adjacent to their files, and in a space that wouldn't be competing for some other space that we're talking about for meetings. The other thing we, we put a little time into, and we'd love to put a lot more time into, is when the town hall was first built, the horse and buggy pulled up out front and came in those nice brownstone stairs to the, to access information in that hallway. And for many years, people parked on the rotary side there and still went in that front door. But today, we really don't see that very often, but I can tell you, only 10 years ago, that was still a practice, and I still see some people do it because it's not a no-parking zone. The point I'm trying to make, though, is the real access to this facility now is through the back parking lot. So the talk about in that second phase, reconfiguring the dynamics of the building, is along the lines of the same thing with the senior center. How is it being used in 2015, because the horse and buggies aren't pulling up out front anymore. People are coming in here, and then they go down the hall, take a right, no, go to the hall, the second door, take a right, then take a left. No, go back to this one, oh, somebody's got to go upstairs and get the permit for the transfer station, hang on, we'll get it. And so our building and the physical layout could really use a 2015 version or 2016 version, which would be just most productive for everybody.
Do you really think that the clerk can fit into that assessor's space there?
The walls would all move to a certain extent.
Okay, you're talking about moving the walls, okay.
Yeah, I mean, not all the walls, but there are many walls within here that can get archways, can be moved. You're walking through a wall, but you don't even know it was a wall because it became a door or an archway, so there's, just similar to the senior center, it doesn't exactly have similar walls. Some of them are, but some of them were, there's no stage, you know, things were significantly changed. The kitchen area was moved from the middle of the building to the other end of the building. If we really go back and think about it, it was redone to meet the needs of today. And I guess that's what we're thinking, is if we move some of the people out of this building, but we really can't get everybody out of this building, how are we going to repurpose the building, what is it going to be? We think we can get it done, you know, redoing with some hard work, you know, of meeting, and there's some good pictures in here, I think. Some good ideas in here.
Okay, I'm sorry, you were at advantages.
Yeah, well, at the end, obviously, there's a few bullet points as far as the building's concerned, retain the historic town hall and identity for the town, because obviously everybody's used to coming in for all their services. Single-point location for residents, obviously, that I just said, to do business with the town. The most cost-effective option to maximize use for the existing space and town labor, that would be the DPW. Town hall improvements would be required in future, even if additional space is acquired, and that's what I alluded to earlier. I haven't put anything forward onto capital as far as renovating bathrooms or doing electrical, well, electrical upgrades has been on my list for a couple of years, but fire sprinkler system, because we didn't know what we were doing with the building. So now I'm finally moving forward because of all the studies that, that have been done, no one is acting upon. The proven approach is demonstrated by the Council on Aging Renovation Project, which took a little time, but like you said, I believe the, the project speaks for itself.
All right, I have a question.
Yes.
With regards to the, you mentioned about the electrical upgrades.
Yes.
I know over at the high school, they have a real problem. I'm sorry, I know that, you mentioned about the electrical upgrades.
Yes.
I know over at the high school, they're having a real problem. This is a little older, I believe, than the high school is. Are we approaching that point where we are maxed out as far as electricity goes here, and is it worth, you know, upgrading everything if we're going to max out?
Yeah, no, this is a much smaller building, so you don't have many taxing systems. Over at the high school, it's a larger facility, and back when they did design the high school convenience outlets for probably two per room, versus now with computers and everything else, you're having 30 outlets in a room. So it's a, it's a, it's a much different scale. And I believe, especially with some of Ryan's new servers and everything else, they're actually requiring less power. We're doing LED upgrades in the parking lot with Dan Pauille and Eddie Lagoo. So as far as this facility, we do not have a problem with power. If anything, like you said, in the future, I, I believe I proposed a, an exact replacement, just new equipment.
Okay, all right.
Sure, if I could, through the chair, when we discussed this, I know you were talking about putting, I believe it, correct me if I'm wrong, it's like an external elevator?
Yes.
On the side of the building, and we also discussed the fact that there was a wall that, that could be gotten through to get to the palace that we know as the library, that they don't want to necessarily share the, what's over there?
Yeah, and that proposal, that wasn't in, one of my proposals, that was one that was done in 2010 for Deeds Construction. And just, and like I said, that proposal getting into the library wasn't cost-effective, you would be actually adding square footage. So we've kind of pushed that to the side because you would add actually a large additional second floor to get to the library
Oh, okay.
From the, from the upper offices on the second floor here.
Okay.
You would add an additional second floor?
Yes, you would have to add actually a second floor access all the way over to the library. I mean, you could see it in your handout, I believe.
Like in Airwalkers, or?
Well, it's, let's see.
And so that's not included in, in either of the figures that you gave us, right?
In lieu of that, would be building a standalone new elevator.
Yep.
That would be the means of trying to utilize the existing elevator in the library.
Right, yes.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
That isn't in my proposal, that was just a question from Mr. Federici from a previous study that was done.
And that was like $3 million?
Yes, and, yes.
But that's included, the pictures are included in here.
Yes, you can see, and that was the latest revision, and that was another thing we were, we were touching upon. The cost for us to do these renovations in-house, in bringing out just certain aspects of the project, is quite significantly reduced compared to the numbers that were given, and they're all in your packet, they're upwards over $2 million.
Okay, well, we got the, we got the packet today.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so certainly, you know-
You gotta digest it a little bit.
Absolutely, absolutely, and it looks like a lot of work, so we do appreciate that, and we certainly will look at it with due diligence. Mr. Gorman, selectman Gorman, do you have any questions before?
You know, I think it's kind of ludicrous to even look at another building, because it's like our, it's like our schools. We got a school here, a school there, a school there, baseball field here, baseball field there. You know, if we start doing, I mean, it's ludicrous what's going on in this town. You know, we start moving people from here, and then they got to go here for this and there for that. I think your idea of staying here is better, because, I don't know if you know Forest Park Junior High School? I went through that since they renovated it.
Yeah.
My wife went there, and her mother went there, and they say, oh, these old buildings, you can't do nothing with. Well, I defy to tell people, go over to Forest Park Junior High and see what they did there, that place is beautiful over there now.
Absolutely.
You know, and I think it's a better idea to stay here, because what was that building going to cost, a million something?
2.8.
Over a million?
Oh, that one, 1.2 or 1.3.
1.2?
I'd rather see to put the, put the money into this building, as long as we do it in a sensible way, not like Bertrand Park. Bertrand Park turned out to be a disaster, as you know, you must work over there.
Oh, I do.
I mean, I got a wife and daughter that works over there.
It was a total disaster.
No, just some of the construction was rushed, that's all.
Man, we paid a guy $65,000 to oversee it, I think he stayed home in bed when he was overseeing it.
Well, and keep in mind, too, we've, we've been doing slight renovations here, all the windows have been redone, all the glass, the large glass windows have been done, so, like you said, the major, majority of the work is a little bit of infrastructure, moving walls around in carpet and paint.
You know, it's just like on top of the library here, we got those domes and stuff up there, I mean, to me, I mean, they had money left over from that project. They should have, somebody should have used their head a little more. We might have been able to utilize that over the library for a second floor at the time, you know, but I don't know what happened when that- you know, but I don't know what happened when that project was taking place, but I know the money went somewhere else. So.
Okay, yes.
I think you're right with what you're doing here.
If I could ask Nick a question, I think.
Certainly.
So we did put in a placeholder for a warrant article, and we wanted to put some money on it so that there would be not this didn't have information kind of thing at the meeting. The question, I guess, is, if you look at what we're proposing, we certainly feel one hundred and ten percent that the four sixty should go onto that placeholder, in other words, to do phase one of the renovation. Is there a way, based on the discussion at the town meeting floor, to have four sixty and an additional phase two, based on what the taxpayers want, or based on other conversations, or what? Through the chair, and our intent would be to at least get it off the ground, because it's been a project forever and ever and ever. Paul put a lot of work in to get it to come to a, you know, a head, and let's do something. We think this will help us with IT and select office and other things we, you know, we mentioned to get us started. But, you know, the whole project would renovate the whole thing like the senior center. I know the budget is not flush this year, so I'm also.
It is not.
I understand that.
It's, I was at appropriations last night.
I was looking for what goes in our placeholder.
Which is, yeah. Do you want Nick first, or you?
Well, what I was going to suggest was, as you know, we did the football field, they came back for the lights, everybody said, why didn't you put that money in? Or, you know, we had the problem with the pool where we thought it was X amount of dollars, and it ends up being almost double, and I hear townspeople saying, you got to come back for more money. And almost, in a perfect world, it'd be great if you said, this is going to be a three-phase project that will cost a million and three, say, just for, throw out a figure. This year, we're looking for four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We'll probably, you know, if it's a two- or three-year project, we'll be coming back next year for phase two and then phase three. But at least the townspeople have an idea of what the total cost is, instead of keep hitting them with these amounts, and they may think that it's never going to end, you know what I mean? If you had a rough idea of what you thought the whole project would cost, not necessarily asking for it in one year, but at least throwing it out there as, we're asking for four hundred and sixty thousand dollars in phase one of a project that we estimate is going to cost a million and three, you know, something like that. That's just my opinion, because that way, there's no variables out there. There is a set figure at the end, and so at least the townspeople know that there's an end, you know, to the project, you know, there is a definitive end, so.
Well, that was, my answer was really just going to be to the effect that it would be really for the board of selectmen, I think, to make a decision as to what warrant article. I think combining them, I don't know that that would, I don't know how the moderator would look at that.
Right.
Because if you're looking at an amount with a range in there, I think typically there's a, just a rule of thumb that he uses, if there's going to be a change, it's within five, five percent or ten percent, we'll say, for a dollar value, and this would be, you know, far exceed that kind of a range. So I don't know if one combined article, if anything, I think it would be one at the four sixty, and then another one at the six ten, and make that type of request at town meeting. And I would further defer to council as to whether or not, you know, combining them would be an option, but my sense is no.
No, it hasn't.
So there's really no number yet.
Well, that was my question note, is should we put down four sixty, because that's probably the first-year accomplishable item, so following along the lines of. And full disclosure, though, this is a phased renovation like we did the senior center, because the senior center wasn't done in one year either, and we, you know, phased it, and people felt good about that.
My suggestion, and not that you asked for it, but if you have a whole number for the entire project, to put that out there as part of it, as part of the presentation, and then list what the phase would be over the years at the town. You know, the voters know what they're applying.
But here's what my concern is, we're just saying this, and I believe we're closing the warrant this evening, or we're going to close it on the fifteenth?
I would ask the board to close it this evening.
And so I don't see how we could put this on there without having fully reviewed this.
We have.
We put it on.
Oh, you put it on, okay. So then we'll be having to vote whether or not we're going to support it.
Yes.
Okay.
In anticipation.
I guess in a perfect world, it would have been nice if we had have been brought in a little earlier on this. I know, luckily Federici was there, but I wasn't aware of it, so. Okay. So his, the answer to his question is to?
I would suggest that the Board of Public Works put down that first-phase number in that article.
Okay.
And unless, unless the board has a different idea, that would be my suggestion.
If I may, through the chair, I think Attorney Donnie basically said what I reiterated was, say, the first phase, but with a total cost of, total potential cost, so.
To the chairman, I don't, to your question, though, I don't think you would put any other number in the warrant, excuse me, other than what the first phase would cost, but then during the presentation, once the article's been moved, and then you're in the presentation phase, have that discussion with town meeting, explain it. This is the program.
You've also got the warrant article in there that says that you want to reconstruct part of the building, and if there's an appropriation for that annual appropriation. But the motion that's going to be made, the board could include in the motion, the total estimated cost as part of it, and then get into the discussion, so it's in the record of the town meeting as to what the total number was that was discussed at that meeting, if they choose to do it that way.
Yeah, you got to explain to the people the total cost, because I'm not for just putting a four sixty down. People, I'm telling you, God's honest truth, after campaigning, people are sick of things hidden in the background and not giving them the full, oh, you're better off just putting the whole thing out to the people, and tell them this, we're going to do it in phases, and let them go from there. Because I'm telling you, they're sick of taxes, they're sick of hidden costs like the football field.
So we've already discussed it, our board's already, that's what we'll do. We'll put, we'll put the four sixty to be approved for this year, but the total amount will be disclosed, and the PowerPoint, brief PowerPoint, because I think it's worthy of a PowerPoint, it's a big enough deal. The brief PowerPoint, and we'll do, I believe, in a pre-taping, if that's all right, we'll do a pre-taping of it with the PowerPoint and an explanation. I think it's May fifth or whatever day we're doing those pre-tapes, so that the taxpayers are going to be able to see and review and watch, you know, the pre-taping of what this is. We'll go full disclosure. What's real important to understand, though, we could do phase one and stop. So that's very important, too, for people to understand, even though it's a three-phase and the total cost to get completely done like we know the COA is. It isn't like we're going to have plastic hanging if the taxpayers don't vote next year for phase two. We will do it in such a manner that we won't obligate the taxpayers to follow through with two and three, it will be totally at their option next year. You know, past this part, we're going to do the things that we said, and it'll be totally usable space. Next year, we come back and say, this is what we're planning to do, totally usable space, and if it takes a third, you know, if we bust up to six ten into three something and a three something, or whatever we do, it'll be totally non-dependent one to the next.
So freestanding, so to say.
So depending on our budget, depending on the amount of money, depending on what else is going on in town, we haven't handcuffed anybody. But this first phase will address, to the best of our knowledge, the significant issue of IT space and rooms needed that are going to be needed in the next year.
Is it just the IC, I keep hearing IC space.
IT.
I mean, IT space.
Yeah.
Is that the only problem?
Why would?
No, but it's.
It does sound like that's the only reason we're doing it, though.
I'm going to tell you, while I'm sitting here in this room, we could hold these meetings down at seniors and then fall down at night and take this space and use it.
That is what it is. So if you would like to have even more understanding of it.
Yeah, I would like that plan.
Then.
It's in, it's in the packet.
Yep. But if I could, if I could just, one more minute.
Yes, Mr. Mayberry.
The information technology area for the town of East Long Meadow has been the growth area of personnel.
Yeah.
And that makes total sense, because we've gone from paper to virtual, digital, and paperless, and a lot of our systems, where you can go online and see your plots and.
Paperless?
Well, and get your computer, and you can get some of that. But anyways, the needs in the schools and the needs in the departments, police department, fire department, everywhere, where we've got technology, has reduced people headcount. And I can have some more conversations, but so we would.
I think that does need to have a conversation, yeah.
We would have to have many more clerks and people doing a lot more things without the technology.
Okay, all right.
So the technology, even though there's been growth in headcount, has either held or maintained a growth in people. Cards in the assessor's office, you know, different documentation you get online, you fill out online, you submit, there's lots of things that are happening through the technology.
Okay.
That we're not having to add another office, another office, another office for more clerical, is what I'm trying to say. So the growth that's actually happened has been because we've gone digital, and we can absorb that growth without needing to have, everybody says, you know, get more people, we're going to need more residents, we're going to need a lot more people. I would want to respectfully disagree that, I think the efficiencies of the computers are keeping us in a better check with numbers of people required. So I don't see this physical plant needing like twice the amount of people.
But digital is supposed to eliminate more people, just like in the phone company where I worked. There's a lot less people. I went from twelve hundred and fifty people I represented down to four hundred and fifty people because of technology and digital.
Right.
So I don't know why we would be increasing people.
The IT staff. That's what I was trying to say is, the digital, the people that put the IT together went from none to two to four to six. That's been the crutch, because they're still in a room that accommodated.
Two.
Two, right. So to get that growth.
They're cozy in there, we'd be less on heat.
And the HR manager growth and some of these other offices we may want to accomplish, we just have to regroup.
Okay, so what we'll do is, we will review this, you'll put your number in, and full disclosure, and then put the four, whatever you.
So for tonight's purposes, you can take that the four sixty is what will be in our article.
Okay.
Looking for those funds this year, we will disclose the total amount and have PowerPoints and do this.
And has, does appropriations already know about this?
No, because we respected that we should come here first. So we're going to get to them as soon as we can.
Do you figure we were the easiest?
No, no, we figured this was the most important place, short of just a subcommittee conversation and some things we did to put this together. This was the soonest, earliest we thought we could get here and do a good presentation. You're first, now we would go to appropriations to fill them in on that four sixty. I believe there was a placeholder, kind of soft on the side, about if the board of selectmen elected to go to the new building, there would have had to been some money in the appropriations, and I haven't been studying it, so I can't tell you the number, but I believe there were some placeholders there, that if you don't go with the building in the RFP, that can be transferred over to what this bonding or cost might be, you know, from that perspective, and it isn't, may or may not have.
Okay.
A difference to the overall appropriations budget.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and review all of that, and if there's anybody else that wants to add anything to that, or subtract?
Option three.
We'll leave the plans also with Nick, they're on that board right there, both options. And like I said, they're not set in stone, we can sit down, review them, obviously.
And I think we should. I think we should.
In case you're looking at it tonight, option three, phase two.
Do you really expect me to be able to see that? Okay, I can see option three, but do you really expect me to see the rest of that?
I do.
Well, it's in the package, so, okay.
You know what, take home the big one.
Okay.
But option three, phase two, I just wanted to point out, that is, that is what we're talking about in a rough form, and the elevator is located, if this is the front steps from the rotary.
Okay.
And this is the back door from the parking lot.
Right.
The elevator is, you know, at that corner where you can kind of go in the other door, it's right there, just to give you a feel for it.
Okay, so, all right.
That's one of the most important things. Other than that, where the walls are, is yet to have some more meetings like we did at the senior center, and get those details.
All right, well, thank you so much.
If this boosts the taxes up at all, you better hold your breath.
Okay.
Because this is a bad year for boosting taxes, let me tell you.
The only thing I'd mention is, we are willing to open public meetings, hearing meetings, besides the tapings and whatever, prior to the town meeting, so we know it's only a month away, but we're prepared.
And would you, you would sponsor them, or would we sponsor them?
We would sponsor them.
And so we would come, I will.
Certainly invite them.
Some, I'm sure some.
Everybody would be invited, we would sponsor them, they'd probably be at the COA.
That makes sense.
Through the chair, we could do what we did when we were proposing the building, and we had that public forum there.
But you know, John, I wish we could publicize that more than we do.
We'll do as much as we can.
You know, we got to really publicize it, just like we do for voting or for anything else, because there's a certain amount of people that nothing gets to because of their work schedule, or kids, or whatever, but I think if we publicized it more, it'd be a lot better.
Well, if it makes, if it makes the warrant through your vote tonight, all we said is what we'll do, and on top of that, you know, we'll write the reminder article through our office to say, this is taking place. I mean, we are the building department, we can handle that, and write those articles and make those hearings available, and you don't have to be burdened by it.
Let me ask you another question, are there, now, what you're telling us tonight, there's no hidden cost, because every time we get some, at town meetings or wherever, there's always a little niche somewhere else.
Yes.
And people are sick of the little niche. That's why we got to be transparent to them, and let them know exactly what's going on. They either accept it, or they don't accept it.
Right. And I think I can say with pretty good factual backup, that when the DPW puts something forward, we come in on or under budget. The ones that get referred to once in a while, we might have some responsibility to, but this one, we're taking ownership.
Okay.
It's ours, Bruce has done the work, Bob's done the work, our staff has been involved, this is our baby. Some of the other ones, we're asked to help with, but they might not have been completely ours in the estimates phase and et cetera. Yes, you can take to the bank, we do phase one, it'll be four sixty or less.
You know I'm going to hold you to it.
I know you will, I know you will.
Expect to.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would expect you to, just like everybody else should.
All right. Well, thank you for coming in, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice to meet you.
Want to get all?
Thank you.
Pleasure.
Thank you.
See, we need elevators. Thanks, John.
Oh, thank you.
I want you to have a TV show, and I'll catch you.
Okay. All right. Next, we have under, excuse me, under old business, we have FY fifteen budget priorities. This is something that was asked for by the appropriations committee, for us to prioritize things that were cut from the budget as a result of the one percent, and they were asking what we would want to restore. I believe what we had discussed at previous meetings was that the, excuse me, our direct, what is it called again? Our blackboard connect would be our first priority, and there's only ten thousand dollars that the committee, that the appropriations committee was talking about that may be accessed. So do we need to go any further with the rest of the prioritization? You being new, did you get a chance, you didn't get a chance to look at that?
No, I didn't get a chance, no.
Yeah, I understand, that's understood.
You're talking about the one percent?
I'm talking about the list that's in your packet. That would be this one, where they had asked for us to prioritize all of these things that were possibly cut because of the one percent. And, um, Paul, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Not really, I mean, just by explanation. Bill, everybody had to give a one percent budget, and then they had to give a wish list of things that if more money came in from the state, then these are items that they deem necessary. So they gave us the list, and it was our job to sort of put them in a priority. But as, as the chairwoman said, if there's ten thousand dollars available, and we thought the blackboard connect, which is basically the reverse nine-one-one calls, that they can do in emergencies and everything, we thought that was the most important out of everything on the budget that was dropped. So if in fact they've got ten thousand dollars to spend, and we've got a eleven thousand dollar item, everything else is sort of a moot point right now, so. Because that, I think we all agree-
Yeah.
That that was our most important priority, yeah.
That was the most important priority, yeah. So, um, Nick?
Just an opportunity for the board to have that discussion.
Alright. And there's one in your, in your packet.
Under what?
It would have been in your first packet.
I didn't see that one, I looked all through this.
You undid your packet?
Yeah, I did, but, um, I know I haven't got that.
Well, I tell you what, Nick will make sure that you get a copy of that.
Yeah, Nick, I didn't get one of those.
Here, I'll let you, I have mine.
I can copy mine off my, I have it at the office. I think there's only two pages, right?
Yeah, there's only two, and here's the first page. Okay. Alright, the next item is the annual town meeting. And the, the first part of that is the warrant articles. I would defer to our former chair, if he'd like to bring us through these, if he would not mind.
Sure, not a problem. Um, Nick, what, are we voting on each individual one?
I think that's up to the board to make a decision on that, but what I really need to do-
Is close the warrant.
Is to close the warrant and to know if there are any that are definitely going to be taken out.
You know- Okay, no, the question that I have, if we didn't have this, this unscheduled meeting, these warrants would have stayed open until the fifteenth, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
But can we close the warrant with only two members here?
Because we would have a majority.
That's true, but we could do it, okay. I mean, that's fine if you want to, uh-
I mean, if you-
Wait till Tuesday.
I, I just-
You realize you're killing me on April fifteenth, that meeting.
I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry, it, you know-
If I'm asleep, don't blame me. Sorry, Bob.
Is there any, did you have a ch, well, it's really not-
It's not fit, yeah.
Because he hasn't really had a chance to look at it, and, um-
That's the fun, that's the fun part of having an election in the middle of the budget process, is you come in not knowing what's going on, and then all of a sudden you gotta bring yourself up to speed in fifteen minutes.
And on, on the fifteenth-
Till my vacation, we read it in.
Yeah, and so you'll have a chance to Skype in, and then you'll be a little more informed. I think that it's best to put this off until the fifteenth.
But if I may, through the chair-
Yes, absolutely.
One thing that Nick and I were discussing, if, if we have a majority, and also through our town- I feel like I'm talking to one of the Blues Brothers, I know you have an issue, but it's-
Do this, is this better?
No, it's okay. If we only have two members, we can still do this, right? Because what we, what Nick and I were talking about was if there's a technical difficulty where, because I'm going back to the Mr. Driscoll days, where things didn't exactly work as well as we had anticipated, when he used to be able to phone in, and there was a time, there were times when he couldn't even get through. So if we're, if there are only two of us because of technical issues, we can still-
Yes.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Thank you, thank you.
I'll make sure I have you on phone, as well as-
Yep, just tell me what time and-
Absolutely, absolutely, okay. So, alright.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just as, one thing, maybe one or two things just to point out, then, when you're looking at it, there's an article, Article eleven, well, the first Article eleven, it's at the top of page three. I had written a comment, I think this is out, and yes, that, that article will not be in there.
That's definitely out, okay.
That was a, a proposal about making, looking at the transfer station to be an enterprise fund. But DPW is not going to pursue that. So that's definitely out.
Okay.
That was Article eleven, Nick?
Eleven, on page three.
The first, the first Article eleven.
First Article, there's two of them.
On page three.
Yep.
Three of six. Okay. Anything else, Nick?
No.
Okay. Alright, so we'll go ahead and do that. So we're moving on to Article six, the notice of reserve fund transfer approval. And I'm gonna refer that to our former chair, or Nick, whichever one wants to take that.
I believe, I think, was it, I, talk with you, at our last meeting, we approved the reserve fund transfer for the, it was twenty thousand dollars.
For twenty thousand, for IT?
Yeah, and I think this is just a notice that appropriations has also given their approval of the same, of the same reserve fund.
Okay.
Same transfer, so.
Okay, great. Okay, next, under new business is the notice of bond rating, the upgrade from standards and pores. I believe we have been upgraded from a triple A to a triple A plus, plus, or double A to plus.
The bond rating has gone from double A to double A plus. And that's just one rating short of the strongest one that standard and pores can give.
Okay. Is there any reason why that happened? It's a wonderful thing to happen, but-
It is a reflection of the general, of the financial position of the town.
Okay.
And, um, this news just came within the last day or so.
Right.
So, um, I had thought perhaps there would be some kind of a report to give to the board, but we do not have that yet.
Okay.
And I'm expecting that through the town accountant, town treasurer, I will have something for the board at the next meeting. But it is, you know, it's a reflection of several different factors that the ratings agency goes through with the town.
Okay.
And it will have the effect, two very positive effects. One would be that premium that bondholders, investors will pay should increase because of this. And then also the, um, the rate at which the town can borrow should go lower because of this. So it's very, very positive news.
Okay, so the town council?
We don't want to borrow, we want to cut.
Town council?
Well, I was just trying to respond to it, I think Nick did it very well. It really just is an indication by the bond rating companies that in reviewing the financial picture and the policies that are in place to manage the municipal accounts that are, that are available, that they feel that the town's rating should be increased to show a strong situation with respect to financial stability of the community.
Fantastic. You have something to say, Mr. Gorman?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, you're all set. Alright, moving on. Uh, there is a request from the J.C.'s. Ari, their annual fishing derby, which will take place on Saturday, April twenty-sixth, from six AM to eleven AM at Heritage Park. There is a recommendation received from the fire department, and it's pending from the police department and pending from DPW. We should have got them while they were here. I will entertain a motion to approve this function.
One second.
I need a motion first, okay, and then a second? Any discussion?
Nope.
Um, can I? Okay, whoops.
Just wanted, if I could add to the discussion. It does appear that we do have recommendations from those, from those bodies.
From both of those, so then we don't have to-
From DPW, fire, and police.
Great, so we don't have to amend the recommendation. Okay, great, so all in, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that carries, and so that's all set. There's also a classic car block party, I'll entertain a motion for a classic block party request. It'll- I'm sorry.
Sorry, I jumped the gun.
That's alright, it'll block off Timber Drive at its intersections with Parker Street and Stonehill Road on Sunday, April twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen, from two PM to five PM. Recommendations have been received from the police department, the fire department, and DPW. I'll entertain a motion.
One second.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Just, Bill, you still have the Cobra? He can bring it over there.
Okay, hearing none out, other than the Cobra? All in favor?
Aye.
And so that passes. Okay, also, this is a notice of a public hearing for the cable television rates. On May twenty-eighth, at ten PM at the Department of Telecommunications and Cable located at one thousand Washington Street in Boston. Uh, next, we have on our agenda the town accountant's position. In your packets, you have a job description of the town accountant. And, uh-
Madam Chair.
Yes.
In, in the packets, you actually, the board has some different, different advertisements.
Advertisements, I'm sorry.
Rather than the job description. I'll be able to give more information out to the board.
Okay. I understand, because everything was so rushed, you know, we didn't get a chance to do that. Again, we were trying to provide some quick relief to the planning board so that they would have their quorum for their public hearing coming up on Tuesday. So, um, did, did either one of you want to give a history, or, I'm just not sure?
Well, it's not really, not really history, but just to let, let everyone know that we've decided to, and for lack of a more intelligent way of putting it, to see what's out there. We're going to be putting the town accountant's position out to bid effective, effective July first. And, you know, we've, we've, obviously, our town accountant has done, has done, I think, a more than adequate job. And, but we just want to see, it's always nice to go out there and see what's available. You don't want to get stagnant in, in any positions, and therefore, we decided to, to put this position, you know, out for bid. And we will be getting a job description together and an ad together, and we'll, we'll be posting it hopefully in the semi-near future, so.
Right.
So we don't have to, I know, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I know-
No, no, you're fine.
I know in the worst case, I've heard through Mass Municipal Association, there is a, and I hate, I know I use this expression, but like, almost like a renting, renting accountant, they have accountants that will come in if we don't fill the position by July first. But in a perfect world, we like to get this done and get somebody new in, so they can, you know, so they can hit the ground running.
Okay.
We're not renewing his contract, right?
Correct.
But he is open to apply for the position.
For what reason?
Uh, just-
That was personnel, and I don't believe that we would be able to talk about that.
No, and it's also just, just the idea of getting, you know, we just thought it'd be a good idea to-
Just so we can see what's out there.
And see what's out there.
Well, from when I was campaigning, I was told that there was money not accounted for.
Well, I know when, when, when you were campaigning, I mean, we have an annual audit that we pay a healthy sum for, so there, there, to my knowledge, there was no money that wasn't accounted for, and, and our accountant, our auditors would, would catch that if there was. I don't, you know, I, I don't know who you heard that from, I don't really go by hearsay or whatever, but I can tell you that as you, as you, you know, go along in this position, you'll see that the auditors do a very good job, and that, that the money that comes into the town is, is all accounted for.
Is that an inside audit or an outside audit we have done?
It's an outside audit, it's an independent auditor, it's Scanlon and Associates. Do a lot of, um, they do many, um, what's the word I'm looking for, municipal audits.
Is there anything, through speaking to council, is there anything that we need to be careful about saying at this point?
No, I think the, the, the discussion about the fact that you're seeking a, another potential accountant is perfectly open for discussion.
Okay.
The new selectman wishes to come up to speed as to the understandings and the basis of how that decision was arrived at, he would have the ability to review the minutes of the various discussions that have taken place.
Okay. Okay.
Or have a discussion with the board in an executive session.
Okay.
Yeah, the thing is, Ms. Donahue, I just want to make sure that this guy had all his rights to keep it, I mean, I think the public should know why we're not renewing this guy's contract.
Yeah, it's fine, and I think you could have that discussion with the board and make a determination as to what, if anything, were the board wished to say about that situation.
And we'll put it on for executive session and future meeting if you'd like.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Yes, you want to have it put on?
Yes.
I got you, okay, alright. Nick, can you make sure that that happens, please?
I'm assuming that would be for the meeting on the twenty-ninth, rather.
Right, when he's actually here. Exactly. Okay, um, the next is the IT systems position. Um, I've had the pleasure of interviewing candidates with Ryan and Craig from our IT department. And I tell, we, tell you, we have some fine candidates. Um, it has been narrowed down, I'm trying to think whether it was eighty-four or sixty-four candidates to start with. And it was narrowed down to nine candidates, and now we are down to four. So the next step is that they're gonna have a, um, a technological interview. And so that's gonna take place on Monday, and so on-
This coming Monday?
This coming Monday. We'll continue the interviewing process to narrow it down, and the recommendation will be made on Tuesday. I did ask if we could wait until the twenty-ninth, however, he is swamped. And he has somebody going on vacation, so we'll have that, we were trying to get it done for us to, uh, wait a minute. We were trying to get it done for tonight.
Yep.
But, um, if you had asked us yesterday, we could have done it, and, but we had some candidates today that just knocked it out of the park. And we just wanted to make sure that we are very careful in who we chose to fill this position, yes.
Are the people in the IT department gonna be part of the process of-
They are.
-fluctuating, or-
Well, Ryan, Ryan Quimby is the head of the department, and Craig is the one who will be working with them also. So, and I believe when they're coming up with the scenarios-
Yep.
They're all working together to come, bring those scenarios forward for, uh, Monday, so.
Because they would be more qualified than us to know what they want, or who they want.
Exactly, but there are some things that go into choosing staff that are just with the, I think it's been, and I think they would attest to it, that it's been a perfect blend.
Yep.
Because they have the technical side, and there are some things that we as a board member and an everyday person that we bring to the side, that we want to see for our whole town, because we all have special parts.
Yep.
And we all make it work together, so, yes, they have their part that they play, but we do too.
Okay.
And so, um, I've been going to the, to the, um, to the interviews, and we're almost done. I wish we could have had a recommendation tonight, but it'll come on Tuesday the fifteenth.
Alright.
Okay?
Yep.
Alright. Uh, employee dental plan, looks like that one was just added, I'll have to defer to Nick.
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair, this was added just today, and this is not an item that needs any decision certainly from the board at all. This is really a notification of a decision that would hopefully be made. This, Corinne Tranquisey, our benefits administration manager, annually works with a broker, our broker for our employee dental plans. Employee dental plans are paid one hundred percent, premiums are paid by the employees, the town does not contribute for these plans. So what happens is, annually, the broker that Corinne works with goes out to several dental providers, insurance providers, to get quotes. And she's been trying to get them in sooner and sooner, but she's been working on it for at least the last four to six weeks. And finally, she had some indication that there would be a quote coming that would be better than what we have currently.
Right.
Little bit of history. About four years ago, up to, up till about four years ago, we used one company called Guardian. Then, one year, a company called Altus came in and provided a better quote, better, better benefit and so forth. So that company, and then they consistently have won the process, so to speak. This year, it seems that a provider, MetLife, has come in and provided a quote that is something that Corinne believes that the board should look at, just rough, rough number. You could be looking at, if you're a family plan, maybe upwards of, say, thirty dollars fewer a month in a premium cost. There are trade-offs, I do have a pack, a packet of information with quotes that Corinne left in this office during this meeting that I will provide to the board members.
Yeah.
There, there are some trade-offs, so there, for example, it's not one hundred percent all the providers that are currently covered are under Altus, are under MetLife. Employees will still have their choice of keeping their provider. But you will see that there's, I believe, two quotes in there. It has to do with whether or not there's going to be a, a balance billing. So if I, if I utilize a dentist that's not in this, this network-
Right.
I can go to that dentist, based on the figures that they're using for usual and customary costs. I may be, build a balance on what is not covered.
And that could fluctuate with each dentist that's out of, out of network. So you have that in there, so-
I have that information for the board.
And we'll get a chance to look at that, okay.
The reason it was added was to at least notify you of this, and unfortunately, we come up with, against the deadline of, well, open enrollment starts May first. So I will ask the board on April twenty-ninth, and if the board would like, Ms. Tranquisey is available to come and speak to this in depth. But I'll ask the board for a decision that evening, because she will need to send out a communication as part of the open enrollment period.
Just to make sure that I have it right, we could not for both of them, is that correct? Just to make sure that I have it right, we could not offer both of them, is that correct? Do we have to offer one or the other?
It's my understanding that it's a one or the other, but I will have that.
Okay, can you be sure?
Yeah.
Because that would make it a little easier if we could just, if they're both quality offers, or we would be able to offer both. Okay.
If I can ask a question.
Absolutely, I'm sorry.
Nick, how many plans did we look at or?
I think we got quotes from, we use a broker, and they go out, and I think we get quotes from at least five, maybe seven, different, different plans.
Yeah, because in the, in the union and phone company, we did the same thing, but the dental plans are tough. They're not the greatest, any of them. You know, for what they cover, you know?
Mm-hmm. Okay, fair enough. Ms. Slakma Federici, do you have anything to add? Okay, I am going to ask to table items fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, until the fifteenth. And then move to seventeen for, um, Nick, notification of DEP sustainability.
Just want to let the board know this is an annual grant, they changed different things.
He'll do it next time.
Pardon me?
No, no, I'm sorry, and he'll do it the next time.
Yeah.
Well, we'll figure it out.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
This is just letting the board know that this, this is an annual grant, it's, the town could at least look at relative to pays you throw and for trash services. Sometimes we're, it, they change the terms a little bit every year as to what they want to focus on.
Okay.
So really, it may not apply one year for us. It, it actually hasn't really for the last couple. But letting the board know that it's there, and it's meant to go to a, they're holding a workshop on this year's grant in a meeting coming up, I think in May.
Okay, could you let us know when that, that is? Because one of the board members may want to attend also. Are you interested in Mr. Federici?
Although I don't know if, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I don't know if it would be, if you'd want necessarily like the, the Board of Health, you know, because it is a health type thing.
Okay.
Again, trash is health, as strange as that sounds.
Okay.
Well, you know, it falls, it falls under the guideline of health, we'll put it that way.
I'll tell you, if, if Slakma Gorman is not able to make it, then.
I'll be happy to, yeah.
Okay, got it. And so let him know about when that date is, Nick.
Okay.
All right, so then the next thing is a town council old business. And I guess this is when I refer to town council and ask which, which of these are executive session?
If, if I may.
You may.
You may want to just do the meetings, invitations, and reminders, so then we can go into executive.
Can I ask you to do that?
I'd be delighted.
Thank you so much.
And I have a question before we even get into it.
Mm-hmm.
The meeting of the twenty-ninth.
Yes.
I am leaving, I will, at the time this meeting starts, thank God, I will be on an airplane.
Oh.
That night, my plane leaves at six thirty-five, so.
Okay.
I don't, I know you can't do.
The meeting on the twenty-ninth, I thought we were moving to the morning.
That's what I was going to ask, because we've still got it down here at six, but I wanted to make sure we had a consensus of.
Oh, no, no, that was being moved. Can you, can you make a meeting in the morning on the twenty-ninth? What time we had said?
If you were dedicated, you would stay.
What's that?
If you were dedicated, you would stay.
Oh, don't you start. Listen.
Were you going to be in twenty-four hours?
Okay, you guys. All right, so what time are we going to agree upon? Is, what, nine would be better for you?
Anything's, anything before three o'clock is fine with me.
Okay, I love ten, but nine is, which is better for you, nine or ten?
It don't matter to me.
Okay, let's, I remember how it was, so let's make it nine.
Okay.
Just so that you can get your morning straight and then.
And just to let you know, I spoke to the fire chief, and I know we were supposed to have, was it four candidates?
Yes.
And he said it's not a problem to hold those off until the May meeting.
Fantastic.
So, you know, because I, I thought if they're, if they're working or whatever, it might be tough for them to make a nine o'clock or noon meeting. So we can, we can hold that off till the subsequent meeting. So just to let you know, that's not, that's not hanging over our heads.
Fantastic. Great, great, okay.
That subsequent meeting will be May thirteenth.
Okay.
Okay, May thirteenth will be the meeting for the candidates?
Okay.
Okay, great. All right, go ahead.
Okay, okay, meetings, invitations, and reminders. The cultural council meeting, Monday, April fourteenth, three PM at Small Conference Room, Easton Metal Library. Item twenty-two has basically, has been postponed or canceled, actually, the housing partnership meeting. And that's also for town council, that's one of the items on our agenda. The gentleman pulled his house from the program. I don't think he's selling it, or at least, he's told us that. He hasn't given us any, anything in writing.
All right, but he, he needs to do that because he's complied, he's given the notice, so that timeframe runs. And if we lose that timeframe, we lose that house as part of the low-income program.
So do we want to keep, not postpone that hearing?
I would keep moving forward until he submits something. Withdrawing is intent to sell.
Have you spoken to him?
He's been notified that we need to have something in writing as soon as possible.
So, but until we get something in writing, we'll still move on?
Well, I know, well, Lorraine's already canceled the meeting with the other members of the, because we don't have a house to sell theoretically.
She may want to, she may want to reestablish that if you don't get that notice in from that gentleman relatively soon.
Okay.
Because you've got that limited window, and if you lose the house, you lose the, if you lose, if you don't comply with the timeframe, you lose the ability to keep that in your stock of low and moderate income.
Madam Chair, if you've been, I would advise the board that the, the timeframe is, I believe, ninety days. And while we want to absolutely be on top of it, we're in no immediate danger of, the town's in no immediate danger of losing the home. But council's absolutely right.
Okay, so you'll notify Lorraine to put it back on, to have it ready, unless you should get something in writing on Monday, maybe?
I'm, I'm assuming that we'll get it on Monday. Like I said, he was notified that he needs to get something in writing.
Okay, but.
If the meeting's been canceled.
We need forty-eight hours.
We need forty-eight hours' notice anyway.
Oh, man, you got to do better with that.
Which will get it after, after April fifteenth.
Okay.
All right.
All right, I guess there's nothing we can do about that.
Okay. Next item is Board of Selectmen's meeting is Tuesday, April fifteenth, at six PM in the town hall hearing room. The town offices are closed Friday, April eighteenth, two thousand fourteen, in observance of Good Friday. Town offices are closed Monday, April twenty-first, in observance of Patriots' Day. Appropriations Committee Public Budget Meeting is Thursday, April twenty-fourth, at seven PM at the high school auditorium. Prescription Drug Takeback Day is Saturday, April twenty-sixth, two thousand fourteen, from ten AM to two PM at the, at the Islam Metal Police Department. The Board of Selectmen's meeting is Tuesday, April twenty-ninth, at nine AM in the town hall hearing room. And the moderators warrant preview program recording is Monday, May fifth, two thousand fourteen, at the Elcat Studios, time to be determined. And for, if I may, for, for Slakma Gorman, what that is, and I won't be back for that, but I think, I think I can make arrangements to do it to everyone's. We each, all the warrant items that we're presenting at the town meeting, they basically videotape us explaining what the warrant is, so the townspeople can watch and get an idea of what's going to happen. You know, what the warrant items are going to be at the town meeting before they go there. So just to let you know.
Okay, I, but going back to twenty-two. I would direct Nick to go ahead and reschedule something so that we have it, and it's better to have it and not need it than to need it and not have it. So, um, to give, what, two, you said two days' notice?
To post the meeting.
To post the meeting.
Could you make it, could you at least make it Wednesday?
It would be, it would be Wednesday.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, that's right, it's after, yes, yes.
As soon as I could post anything, it would be on Monday.
All right, wonderful.
And then that's with hopes that.
We get the letter.
We get the letters. There you go, okay.
So you post one and that's the one?
It's going to be posted to, it'll be posted for Wednesday. However, if they should get the letter stating in, in writing that he's not going to sell the house, they would, the meeting would no longer take place.
And this is actually the housing partnership, so it's not the whole board, it's just, I think, myself and whoever shows up in the housing partnership.
Okay, and that is that, if you could do it for six PM again, that would be great. Okay.
Madam Chair, the only caveat, I would say that is assuming that the other members of the partnership committee are available for that one.
Right, exactly.
Because it's easy, sometimes it's easier to find Jimmy Hoffa, so.
Oh, oh, Lord. Okay, I have the Blues Brothers.
Item.
You like that, though?
I do like that, I'm sorry, I.
That's okay.
You can get me later, you can get me later. I'll do it once, okay.
Item eighteen, the contract would be executive session, it'd be non-union contract negotiations. And item nineteen, I'm, I'm not sure what the notice is.
To the chairman?
Yes.
I would explain to council that this is an item that the board has directed council to investigate.
Oh, that's fine, that, that would be executive session as well.
Okay, and twenty's been taken off, correct?
Yeah.
Table.
Madam Chair, do I have a question for council? Once the letter has been submitted from the individual with regards to the house, should the board then take a step at a subsequent meeting to vote to accept the, I don't know?
Reversal of the, yeah. We can do that Tuesday, actually.
If the letter comes in.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily have to be accepted, but I think to make it part of the package, indicating that he's no longer going to sell, and he wishes to withdraw his request. And then the board can accept it and put it in the file, so you've got a complete package in the future. Because you've got a number of houses over there where the process goes on, and it's much easier back in the file and say, well, you did it this time, why didn't you do it last night?
Exactly.
Makes more sense.
It sounds like a plan to me. Well, before we close out, I want to publicly thank Mr. Federici, for, Selectmen Federici, for getting us through an extremely rough time.
It'll get easier.
And, and for, and for his anticipated continued help. And I'd like to shake his hand and thank him personally and, and publicly.
Just like you're going to be helping. You're going to be helping the Board of Health chairmen.
Exactly, and that's what we do, we, we all do that. So, and now I'm going to ask for your assistance to get us into executive session.
I believe you want to make a motion to move into executive session to discuss matters relating to non-union contract negotiations, and I don't know what the other one would be.
Employees' right to privacy.
Employees' right to privacy, to return to open session only to adjourn.
Exactly what he said. I'll entertain that motion.
So moved.
A second?
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Selectmen Federici?
Yes.
Selectmen Gorman?
Aye.
Yes, and Selectmen Thorpe, yes.
Very good, good job.
Thank you.